Great. Welcome to Santaquin City Council Work Session. It's Tuesday, September 5th. And I will do the roll call right now and actually the roll call is, Councilman Meekum is not with us tonight. He's been excused. Everyone else is present. So with that, could I ask if someone would lead us into Pledge of Allegiance?
I will.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks. I'd also like to ask if there is anyone who would offer an invocation or a inspirational thought? John?
Dear Father in heaven, we're grateful for the opportunity to be gathered this evening. We pray that thy Spirit might be upon us and be able to help the mayor and council as they work to develop the things that are best for the residents of Santaquin. And bless all those that participate. And we say this in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Oh, there's a couple of things that I really wanted to put on here mainly because we've had some businesses that came up and I know they're a little controversial summary in some regards, but it has to do with access requirements that we have on Main Street. Now, this came along when after Verl Wall died and his property went up for sale and the family proposed another, well, somebody come along and proposed to build a car wash there. And the issue was there's not a second exit. Now, the thing that I worry about is the report that we often hear that's less substantiated, and that is, do we work with people? Do we work with businesses and bring them in? And my concern, especially as I've looked at this, is not only is the Wall property sitting there, and Mr. Wall just walked in, by the way, you're in the middle of a conversation, so we'll talk about you and point fingers. But anyway, what I looked at was basically my own report of driving down Main Street and counting how many lots there are that are in this business district and downtown business district that are going to one day want access. Now, the access is determined by how many trips a day that are made through it. You know, if it's a high-use area that would cause backup out onto Main Street, well, that's an issue because that's a UDOT road. However, are we causing a problem by having this? And is there some justification? I really wanted to bring it up, and I've not talked to Joe about any of this. So this is all a surprise to Joe, I believe, as he walks into this tonight. But I want to know where we stand, and I want to know if, if we have this, are we really hurting our business district? Or do we need to look at how we can fix this in the future? Or do we need to? Now, these are recommendations that come through, you know, engineering, of course, of counting vehicles, for sure. But also, we need to look and see what difference this is making and how does it impact us? How does it impact those property owners?
Aren't we hampered because it's a state road?
So in some regards, yeah, but go ahead.
Yeah, Mayor, if I may, so indicating that they would need access, most of those properties, if not all of them, have access right now. What happens is a change in use from a residential, say, to a, to a business of some sort, whether it be an AutoZone, you know, we're getting an AutoZone, they require two accesses, okay? And that's, that largely has to do with a couple of things. The mayor has already talked about that with one of them, and that is backing up or circulation issues. Backing up onto the state highway can be very dangerous. The other thing is fire code, right? If you only have one way in, how do you get a fire truck in and out? There are lots of other parameters as well. But just to be clear, the mayor is talking about, I believe, mostly residential properties that exist as residential today may someday want to go in to be a business of some sort. And those businesses, depending on the type of use, can trigger having to have a second access, right? Some businesses wouldn't have to have a second access. Some do just by the number of trips that are generated. And that is a very much a fundamental access and safety and engineering, all of those things, MUTCD and federal highway, all of that kind of stuff goes into that. So I just want to make sure that, clear that some, most of them have access today, but it's a potential change in use that could cause an issue with whether they can have access or two accesses on a UDOT rideaway. One of the things to answer your question a little bit, UDOT has, has distance requirements typically. If you have two accesses, you have to have X number of feet between you and the, and the second one, and potentially to between you and adjacent property owners. So that's kind of how, how UDOT would have kind of their, their hand in that if they... But, but again, they also look at, very much, they look at safety. One of the things that we did, for instance, with McDonald's, even as far off of Highway 6 as McDonald's is, we worked with them to make sure that they had as much queuing room as possible. Because if you go to the Payson McDonald's at eight o'clock in the morning, on a school morning or a Saturday morning, that they can have both of those lanes backed up all the way to Main Street on, in Payson. And they have quite a bit of queuing. Twenty cars may be worth of queuing. So that's what, some of the things that to keep in mind and keep in consideration. But I know Jason's done some work here and we'll pull up the code and have that discussion that the mayor wants to have.
Well, yeah, and I know that we want to talk about the code and we don't have a whole lot of time. But, you know, sometimes we look at things in a little bit of a myopic view. And, and it often takes, takes somebody to rattle our chain to go, oh, why do we do it? Well, because that's the way it's always been done. Well, is that really the case with this? I don't know. However, I want to throw out, what if you made a bigger driveway with a right in and a right out only? And, and put a little island in there so that controlled that traffic and it made it work? And, and those kind of things are something that you can easily look at on a full acre lot, pretty easily. On a half acre lot, yeah. On a quarter acre lot, no, you're going to be lucky to get a car in there and out. But all of those exist on Main Street. And, and we're going to have this issue over and over again. And whether it's the walls trying to sell their property or any of the other thirty or forty different ownerships that exist down Main Street, we ought to consider this. Is there a way we could look at it and go right in, right out? Look at what the layout is and how many you could move through it? And actually make a change to the ordinance rather than say, well, it's a rubber stamp. You have two hundred cars an hour that'll come through? Well, you can put two hundred cars an hour side by side in four lanes and have them out of the way in no time. So I looked at where there are options that we could do this. Right in front of Chubby's in Payson. They do that very same thing with a state highway and only one in on the other end. And, and you go, huh, that works. And it works right in, right out. And it moves the traffic. And that little complex, there's probably six, seven businesses in an acre right there. And, and they are moving it very fast. And, and so I drove through it a couple of times just to see what it felt like the other day. And you know what? Things like that can work, but we don't utilize those. And, and we could, and it could take what we're doing as an ordinance and maybe move it to where we could be more business friendly with just something as simple as that.
I think the difference that, I think this isn't on, sorry. The difference that I see with that area at Chubby's and Taco Bell that you're talking about, is that the right area?
Yeah.
In Payson, is that they have that, if, if you're coming from the west, you're allowed to turn in off of 800 South. And then if you're headed east, you can turn out.
Right in, right out.
Yes.
Yeah.
But the difference there is that they have another entrance and exit point at the south end of the property.
More than one or a half an acre or something else. There, there is extensions to that.
So for our Main Street, I think that that would be really tricky unless the property was long enough to allow the one in, one out, but then have another ingress, egress at a different point, at a different end. Because if people can only get in and out one way on our Main Street, we're going to have people flipping U-turns and in the middle of Main Street unless we put in a ridiculous traffic circle.
Can I chime in here? Because I can see the council has their, their feelings and they want to speak about it. I just really want to give you some quick context. And, and really, I wanted to maybe start off with, with a little bit backwards on this. And that is basically with a recommendation. My recommendation would be that with any legislative action, you require a planning commission recommendation, public hearing, city council. I would, I would also recommend that this be something the DRC look at because code provisions like this exist for a reason. And I think public safety, engineering, and then that probably would have a lot of information or, or, you know, have a say on, on why this, this is there and, and, you know, what the ramifications would be if it, if it were changed or if it were not changed.
Yeah, but let me interject one thing. I'm not, I'm not trying to say that we should bypass all those and pass a legislative action. I'm saying, let's come up with a review. If this council says, hey, we need to look at this for the betterment of our community, then certainly we not only need to get engineering involved, but P&amp;G and DRC and all the rest of the acronyms you can drum up.
Well, that was going to lead into my next comment, and that is this, I think Mayor wanted to bring this forward. And that's really the purpose of tonight is to get some direction on if you even want it to go in that process. Again, I would say a little bit non-typical and maybe have the DRC weigh in on it as well just because of the technical aspect of this requirement. But anyway, so really the requirement that is at the forefront of this topic in relation to the, the property that the mayor mentioned is, is in our parking code. It's 10 dot 48 dot 050. And it's particularly paragraph E, and I'm just going to read it so you know. Any development with a single point of access, ingress and egress, shall have a maximum ADT, which is average daily trips, of 250 trips. Any development that exceeds an ADD, ADT of 250 shall provide a secondary access for ingress to and egress from the site. So context there, this, this was actually amended back in 2018. Before, the code was just you needed two points of access, period. But we actually amended it and changed it to be based on the number of vehicles or number of trips that that use would generate. And frankly, the, the use that, that kind of, you know, had a concern with that requirement and wanted us to look at it a little bit more is when, when the CVMC building was built. They said, we're, we're a doctor's office. We don't get it, we're not going to have that many people come to the site. And we said, that's a reasonable request. We took it through the legislative process. And it was determined that 250 trips was, would be a good line in the sand, if you will, of, of a land use that would need two, two access points for their, their parking versus just one. So we do allow for one, if it's a, a less impactful or a less intensive land use. The second access requirement comes in when it's over 250 trips. So that's the, the, the code provision that really is, is kind of at the epicenter of, of some of the concerns that are being expressed and the reason why the mayor wants to explore this more. Again, my recommendation would be to look at it because, you know, why that exists, I don't have the whole history on it. I see that it was amended in 2018 and that was, that was an amendment that I was a part of. But before that, there's probably fire code and, and other, you know, engineering, traffic, engineering principles that come into play, public safety. So, but this really would be for the council to, to consider whether you wanted to change that requirement for viability of commercial on Main Street or, or other areas. I think that, that requirement generally applies everywhere. I mean, obviously, we're not going to have two accesses for a residential home. But I think any development is, is the terminology that's used. That I think it's going to apply to C1, to Main Street, to, to, you know, any, any type of commercial development or similar type of, type of a use. So really, we're, we're here for your direction and your feedback. And, and if this is something you, you think is worthwhile to look at, then we can initiate that process. Again, we'll take it through the normal legislative process. But my recommendation would be that, that you have the DRC weigh in and provide a recommendation to kind of help with the technical aspect of that. But really, this, this is, we're, we're here to listen to, to what your thoughts are and if you want to initiate this, this, this process or just hear what your general feelings are about this, this provision.
Well, you know, if I, I would have driven down Main Street and there would have been no other lots that would be affected even in the future, it's now that we need to look at this and have it discussed and brought up and make sure that the right decision is being made because it affects people's livelihood if, if they're trying to sell, but also marshall if they're trying to start a business and they can't do so. And we, we may have or end up with the wrong kind of thinking, a bunch of landlocked pieces that create a dead downtown. And do we want that? Or is that the look we want? Or is, are, are we addressing everything correctly? And, and you guys are the ones that need to bring this to a vote or something if we want to move forward. Because, but honestly, I think it would be good to have people's minds put together with this and, and make sure that we're either on the right track or we're ready to change something. So, Dave?
Yeah, so I, I look at the situation and, and it's, it's with the same issue we have with, obviously, we've been in a growing, you know, Santaquin's doubled, what, in five years? So, you know, with that growth is obviously now, we're, we're starting to, to pick up the business side of things.
But also more traffic.
Sure. Yeah, it's not going to get less by any means. But to me, the order, these, these things that we have on the books are, are, to me, is a guideline, right? But I think we need to continue to, to look at, look at and move forward with, with ideas with, with the businesses that I feel is good, that's going to start coming. I just as soon have businesses right here on Main Street than a lot of cities is now shoving their, being, their businesses are being shoved down on another exit, right? So we got all that property sitting down there. I'd just as soon create an issue where we have a lot of options for a, a business that can come there for the in and out on the state road. So my recommend, I, for sure, I, I'm not only running through all the channels, but I think we need to come up with an actual plan that, that a business can come and look at and say, oh, yeah, that could work.
Yeah, the difference would have been is if that, if that business says, oh, we only run 249 cars through, then there would have never been an issue. Well, does that exist with everybody else? Is there a way that, you know, people could use things when in fact, we really need it right, not just played and tinkered with?
Yeah, I think to answer that question, so you know, generally, we, we, we look to the applicant to, to have us understand how many trips they anticipate generating. You know, I think there, there's some, some uses that we, we can generally have a good idea if they're going to be over or under 250. You know, I think a Costco, if they said, we're going to generate less than 250 trips, we'd be like, eh, nice try. So that's just a crazy example, but that's, that's how we, we basically determine whether or not, we look to the applicant. And it's, it's not like, you know, if they say 249 and it sounds reasonable, then that's, that's generally what we'll do. We're not going to, you know, I mean, if there's, there's strong suspicion that, that that might be inaccurate, then we'll look into it a little bit more. But that's generally how we look at it. And, and again, I, we have, we have no, no concerns with us being looked at. I mean, I shouldn't say that. That's why I suggested going to the DRC is I think initially, yeah, there's, there's reasons for it, and I think there's reasons to, to, to explore changing it or, or, you know, being more, creating more possibilities for certain businesses to, to utilize properties on Main Street. So I think, you know, it's, it's, it's a process to look at. And I think, you know, there may be some, some reason to, to change it or maybe as we dig into it and we, we, you know, we, we've not talked with staff about this, meaning like the DRC, public safety and that. But they may have some strong reasons why it, it should remain the way that it is now. So really, we're just looking for your direction if you want to, to start that process or if you think, no, this makes sense the way that it is and, and then we move on.
I'm just, I'm just one, but I, I look at it from the point of view that's not necessarily, we got to go in and, and, and change that or rewrite that or any of that. To me, I, I'd just like to have it looked at and add to the options. Let's, let's, let's look at it, bring it in as a positive and, and see if there's other avenues of, of being more than just what we've got there. Does that make sense?
So it does, and we, we've done that. So with, with certain sites on, on Main Street, we've talked with them about maybe a shared access or, or a cross-access easement or, you know, accesses out the back.
Right.
So we, we've tried to be, you know, we've tried to be creative with, with what possible solutions could help them meet that requirement. We're not just, you know, this is it, tough luck if it doesn't work. But at the same time, as, as much as we sometimes try and, and maybe get creative or think of other ways in which they can satisfy that requirement, we are bound by the code as, as a city.
Right.
We have to follow the, the code that we have. And sometimes, you know, there's even internal conflicts. And that's why you're always seeing ordinance amendments come forward as, as some, you know, I'll be the first to say the code's not perfect, but it's certainly something that we have to follow.
Well, there's no reason we can't look at it.
Right.
Have it evaluated and either change it or leave it. But at least we have to have a straight face as we look at it. So I think I'm asking that it be sent on, that we look at it through the DRC's eyes, through our staff's eyes, through the eyes of planning and zoning, and then bring it back. And if there is something that can be changed that would help this, we got to remember there's a lot more possibilities for, for businesses. And, and maybe there's more that we need to look at all the way through, you know? We got to be growing.
Yep.
I'm okay to, I'm okay to take it through the process, see what their recommendations are. And if, if they don't come up with anything better or we don't think that their recommendations are feasible, we can cross that bridge when I come to, when we come to it. But I don't think there's any harm except for staff time, but...
Well, if, if we're looking at something like this for an eight-hour day, what you're talking about is every two minutes, 1.92 seconds, 1.92 minutes, a car goes through. And I don't know what you can do that it goes that fast. So 250 is a lot.
So what I'm hearing and I'm seeing some head nodding, we're, we're happy to, we'll have DRC next Tuesday. And I think we can certainly put it on there, not as, you know, maybe it's not ready to move forward. Maybe there's a little context that's given and, and maybe members of the DRC say, you know, give us a couple of weeks to think about this. But we'll, we'll plan to put it on our DRC agenda next Tuesday. And maybe there's a recommendation that comes out of it. If not, then, then we've got it to, to our different departments for them to, to look at a little bit closer and analyze for a recommendation that they can make. Then we'll do a public hearing, planning commission, we'll review it, have a recommendation, then we'll be back for, here for your consideration.
Yeah, so do we need to make a motion in this or just move it on?
We, we got your direction. We'll, we'll, we'll start, we'll start looking into this and we'll, we'll have some recommendations for you to consider.
I see three, three eyes and a nose. I, I really would like to see how this goes, just for evaluation.
We'll do it.
Okay. Good. Prospector View Park Trails Update.
Yeah, Mayor and Council. So at the request of several council members, we, John Bradley and I, mostly John, have, have put together kind of a, just a brief presentation to kind of bring the, the council up to speed on where we're at with the, with the mountain bike park and, and discuss anything that you have to discuss as we just run through the timeline. We'll just remind you that in 2022, the mayor announced his vision, sites, visits and work began on the trail systems last year on the 80 acres that the city owns that spans the road, has our, most of our springs in that 80 acres, et cetera. We submitted an application, John did, submitted an application for a matching grant for the state to help us with the restroom and other things, right? Prospector View Park with the Trailhead and the logo was created. We started an EPA process, which is a, a federal environmental evaluation process through the Forest Service to allow the connection between the, the city's 80 acres and the additional 40 acres that are split north to south by a Forest Service parcel that's in there. Started partnerships, discussions with the, with the DWR and private landowners. We received a $60,500 matching grant from the Utah Recreation and that helped us to get the, the restroom that we put up there. You'll, you'll note that we, that we brought to you maybe a year or so ago, the purchase of the restroom. The grant pretty much paid for all of that, and I'll go into that here in just a second. John, you can jump in anywhere you want here. Started gathering information and there is a, there is a, what we would call an ad hoc trails committee. It's not a formal committee by the city. It's a few members of the, of the residents of the city that have, kind of get together and they go clean trails and they go help with, with some ideas and thoughts and that kind of thing. The, they, they meet as a, as needed, I would say, probably is the best way to put it, to clean trails or, or to, to look at concepts or other things like that. I can tell you that outside of this ad hoc committee, the mayor also has several other, the Utah Trails, Utah County Trails Coalition or whatever the name of it is. Alliance, I'm sorry, have been down at least a number of times to help clear trails and move rocks and remove roots and tree, you know, trim tree branches and weed whack and those other things. I know just a couple of weeks ago, one of our own employees who has a son that plays football for Payson High School, they had 60 some odd varsity high school football players out also clearing trails and, and moving rocks and, and just kind of cleaning things up and keeping it to where it can be usable.
Before you go further, who's on that ad hoc committee? And is there a member of the council that is represented?
So there's not a member of the council. Again, it's not a formally organized city committee. It's a, they, they basically have formalized and organized themselves. So one of them happens to be the mayor's daughter, but there's others that are, I, I think, is Carl on that?
Yeah.
Carl Timont, who is a resident, several other residents. Again, and not a, not a formal council member representative there because it's not a city. We don't take minutes. We don't have role. We don't, there, there's not any formal...
I'm usually included in everything.
The, the mayor is usually there, but if the mayor would like to direct that a council member meet when that board meets, then I guess that's something that he could do. And, but again, it's not, it's, it's not even a formal city committee. It's an ad hoc committee that they've just created and, and provide service and, and input.
Do they have decision-making powers?
They do not.
Okay.
Nope. Again, they don't have minutes. We don't have anybody taking notes or anything of that, that agenda. That, that's just something that they do on their own.
Okay, thank you.
They usually just tell me what they like and don't like. Why don't you do this?
So there's your, there's your Prospector View and Trailhead signage that we have there. This is, this appears on almost all of our signs that we have there. Sands a couple of like slow down signs. There's a curb ahead, those types of things. That's our, that's been our, our signage that we put up there. Timeline continued. Again, you can see the, the, the Trailhead sign there. The parking lot and the Trailhead was constructed last year, mostly done with the, once the bathroom got done. There, there is some stuff still going on this year with some donated parking lot lights. There's some, three solar-powered parking lot lights that are being installed as we speak. They're not done yet, but...
No, they're in. They're up and running.
Sorry, I've been gone for the...
For two weeks.
I've been gone for the weekend. I apologize. So donated by Greg Faux and, and his company, probably a year or so ago was, was what he donated for those. He, he wanted to get some...
Year and a half ago, actually.
Parking lot lights up there and, and we didn't have any power. And he said, oh, we'll just do it with solar. So we now have three solar-powered parking lot lights.
The last time I was up there to see, just put up the poles.
Yes, that was the, that was the last time I saw it as well, so. Yes, that was the, that was the last time I saw it as well, so I'm behind the times. Sorry about that.
And the lights work. Kind of cool.
That's good.
Yeah, all night.
The the bridge design was completed by a professional engineer at no cost to the city, uh, stamped and and turned into the county. We did have to get a building permit for both that and the restroom, and we have both of those, and those are, have been fulfilled and and finalizing those out. The bridge is done. Um, I have a picture, if you wanna see a picture, but it's not on my computer. I'll pull it up. Um, very well constructed to, according to the engineering standards, it's very stable, quite a bit above the the high water mark that we saw this year, which is really good, so it's plenty protected and and should serve for quite some time. It's a, it's made out of six, um, donated Rocky Mountain Power power poles. Is the, is the frame structure going across with some concrete abutments and, uh, decking over the top of that with with, um, uh, side rails that have cables in them. So you've, you've all seen kind of cable-type hand railing. That's what it looks like.
The si- the six poles are bolted together vertically and horizontally, so.
Very, very stout. Yeah. I I've been in buildings that have more give in the floors than that bridge does, so. Uh, installation of the restroom again was good. The installation of the entrance sign and information kiosk, we do have a kiosk up there. It's just a, like a Forest Service-type kiosk that has a little roof over it and there's a a plexiglass cover. And we will, we'll be putting up signs and informational and maps and other things in there that people can go and use as we continue to develop that. Uh, hydro, hydro seating around the parking lot, so like this back, this back thing here, the mayor has spread some, some topsoil recently. And this back embankment here has been reseated or will be reseated. Was it already done a second time, Mayor?
Yep.
Okay, so that's all done and that's part of our permit for the county was to slope stabilization and drainage and all that kind of stuff. So that's good. That's the parking lot. Um, oh, there's the hydro seater right there. Look at that. Now you can see the green in the background on those slopes where they've hydro seeded it, which is just native seed. There is no irrigation or anything there, just native seed to help hold the the bank in and keep it stable. Uh, trail construction, there's the one and only mayor right there that, uh, has been up on the trail for hours and hours and hours. Um, on on both sides of the road now. I wanna say that we probably have close to ten miles of trail, maybe a little bit more than that as we're, as he continues to do some work up there.
I think a bunch more than that.
Too, too many excavators were donated and used during that time. Um, essentially, the the only thing that the city paid was the fuel for the excavator, so pretty, pretty minimal in in cost for that. Um, one of the, one of the highlights of this, John has kept track of, very good track of hours, over a thousand hours of donated time in twenty twenty-two and calendar twenty twenty-two. And that actually helped us to where some of the grant funding that we've got went farther than what we anticipated because we got to count all of these volunteer hours towards the the matching part of the grant. So we have, we we've been able to to buy picnic tables and other things to go along with it to to flesh that out according to what's in the master plan. So there's some, there's some, uh, trails that you can see there, beautiful fall foliage. I think this was the one that was done, was this the high school kids that were there just last, a couple of weeks ago, or was that last year? Okay.
No, those are the high school kids.
Yeah. Okay. Uh, created a new route around our springs in cooperation with the state to make sure we didn't have any problem with our springs or anything. They're still intact and everything's good that way, so there's no issues with that. That just kind of is a, you can see the trail just goes along the the, uh, east side of the, of the, uh, fence there and along the the side of it goes down towards the other end that will take you up on top.
We, we had one guy donate barbless wire for the top of that, so that we had no issues with safety.
You don't wanna get your knuckles on barbed wire like that.
Yeah.
So yeah, there's, that's that. Um, we we did finalize the partnership with the Forest Service. We finally have a permit to be able to go onto that Forest Service property now to connect the whole tw- hundred and twenty acres. And the easement that the mayor was able to to, uh, secure from the Kester family. Joel Kester donated an easement along his fence line. This Forest Service property helps us to get to that. The road at Pole Canyon Road and then the the other forty acres down at the south end. Um, we do have a verbal commitment from, uh, DNR, but we don't have anything back from them, so we're holding off on on doing that. I would note that the the trails that you've seen here with the, with the mini excavator that were excavated like that are are pretty heavy-duty trails. The stuff on the Forest Service and the DNR is gonna be more handwork and and less machine work, so that it's a little more natural, a little bit more, um, kind of native and and not disturbing the the hillside as much in those areas. Uh, crossing Summit Creek, did you get a picture of the trail, of the bridge in here? Okay, good. So.
There's the amount midway down, how much we we saved by using all the volunteers.
Yeah.
And the in-kind donation on equipment.
So those, those in-kind hours, twenty-four thousand dollars saved by by having, that's twenty-four dollars an hour. If you're, so that's fantastic that they allowed us to be able to have that, that volunteerism and and count it towards our matching funds. Um, hydro seeding, we've talked about that, volunteer hours, the excavators. So one of the things, John, maybe you wanna report on this last, why don't you come up and and talk about this last, uh, bolden sentence here?
On that one or the next one?
Oh, right here.
Well, one of the things that we found when I go to the different conferences regarding trails is we talked to some cities that, um, literally have spent hundreds of thousands of dollars to build like two miles of trails. And they have things backed up years. And so one thing I will have to say is kudos to Mayor's vision, is because of the donated mini Xs and because of our ability to move forward with all the volunteer labor, that we've literally jumped ahead, I would say a decade in what's been built. Um, if we were waiting for, um, to pay an actual professional crew to build each mile, it, there'd be a lot of waiting. And I, again, I've gone and I've talked to groups, I mean, I mean, large cities like Bountiful that are right on the mountain, they're spending millions of dollars on just paying crews to build. And so that's something that's been pretty unique to be able to see as things go, that wow, things are moving quickly. But we're also, we're really, we're providing something to the residents now that they would have had to have waited at least a decade, so that's kind of neat.
Yeah, you can go ahead and talk about that one too, if you want.
Yeah, that's a great one. As as many hours as Mayor sat on that bouncing, um, mini X, I think it's pretty amazing. Um, this picture was just a whole group of, um, a lot of those people are on kind of the ad hoc committee, but people that come up and help. One day they said, anyone that wants to join us, we're gonna do a ride. And I actually borrowed a bike there and I had so much fun that for Christmas, Santa Claus brought me a mountain bike too. I actually bought a bike so I could start riding, um, had so much fun just riding, um, over the fall.
Awesome. So again, you can see some of the si- signage that John has implemented. We've got the Trailhead sign, we've got the, like, the Forest Service trail markers right here that have the no motorized vehicles. You know, it's for hiking and biking essentially, and as we need to, no, no, as we need to put more stickers on there, we can and just expand those like, like the Forest Service does for their trails. It is a limited set of trails, no motorized vehicles. You can have a pedal assist on a, on a electric bike, but not a powered electric motorcycle essentially with a throttle. So there's the kiosk that will put the maps and stuff in and other usable information. That one's, that's been put up. Um, we do have rules. We do have, uh, just like with all of our parks. You know, there's gonna be inherent risks in everything that 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 people do, whether it's playing soccer, whether it's pickleball and you get hit in the eye with the, with the racket that somebody slips out of their hand or whatever it happens to be. So we have a a similar set of rules here, just like what we do in our city parks. Now, the hours are a little bit different. I think they're expanded by an hour on the front and the back end, or is that the same? Don't we go six to ten in city parks? Or is it five to eleven?
Our sports parks are, is the same.
Okay, alright.
Regular parks are more.
Six to ten, right? Yeah.
It's more the the large sports park gathering spaces.
Okay. Um, again, telling people what they can and can't do, this is, this is not, these are not trails that are made for horses or motorcycles. Um, we've had an issue that we've had to put up signs because people were using that backstop as a, as for target practice in the parking lot. That's not what we wanna have a, as a backstop there to to do that. Um, we do have stop signs at any, any locations where they're crossing a road or crossing a trail or crossing so that the the bikers are aware that that traffic doesn't stop for them.
And and out of the parking lot.
Yeah, and out of the parking lot, just similar to to every other, I mean, you go out and ride on a trail, right, an asphalt trail. Typically, the trails have stop signs at ro- at major roads or any roads, and the traffic has the right of way. So that's a little bit different than what you might think of as a, as a regular, um, bicycle, uh, standard when you, when you're riding in the road. But these are more, more of the crossing. We do have some trail etiquette that that we try to help people to understand. Try to to figure out how to make sure that we're, that we're taking care of things that way. Um, again, we finalized the NEPA permit this year, uh, almost a year and a half in the process. And that even, in in my history, in my experience with NEPA, even that's fast. Usually, it's, it's a two-to-three-year process to get any kind of NEPA, uh, designation, uh, taken care of. Uh, there's ongoing trail building. Again, this is, this is probably this year from the, the folks that were up there a few weeks ago. There's the bridge, so you can see, this is, this is kind of just the, the bridge itself, the, being made with the structure. You can, you can kind of see concrete abutment on the backside of it. And then there's uprights every about four to six feet, steel uprights that have cables running all the way through them. So plenty sturdy, plenty, um.
We don't have a finished photo?
You know what? I was just looking. I think I downloaded on my computer.
So obviously, they don't have to take a two-foot jump here. The the dirt's been pushed up against it so that they have the.
Oh, by the, by the way, tomorrow, uh, the, the North State has, uh, activity and they're gonna go spray it with linseed oil.
Oh, okay.
The whole thing.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Okay. So a- again, we, the, the crews have filled in the dirt.
Saturday too.
Yeah.
Okay.
Different.
Yeah, they have.
So I'm, I'm gonna assume that, that the, um, washout factor, I guess. Uh, you put big rocks.
We did, yep. There's a, there's huge riprap and there's two, at each end, there's a, there's a two-by-two-by-four concrete block that these sit on. And then large riprap around it, yes, we've, we've done that. And and also, so that was actually a requirement of the state. We have permit after permit after permit, but that was a requirement of the state for us, for what they call a stream alteration permit. We didn't, we didn't disturb the stream, but they do have requirements that we have to be three feet above, uh, high water, annual high water mark. Well, we have quite a bit of high water this year and we're, we're about six or seven feet above and that kind of thing. So it, 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 uh, I'm not sure it would handle an eighty-three, eighty-four situation, but this year it didn't even come close to where this is at, even with the high volume of water that we have. So sometimes we have three hundred CFS coming out of the canyon at times this year, so. Yeah, so a- all of that's been done to engineering standards and state standards and Utah County standards and building permit standards and everything else. So it's been good with that. Um, just recently, because of some of the sharp curves that are there, as you can imagine, as you're, you're going up on a steep slope, you, there's, there's just terrain where you, you have to do a, a switchback, and those switchbacks are bermed so that they're, you know, I'm not saying you could take it twenty miles an hour on a berm and go horizontal, but but we just try to give people a heads up and make sure that they know that there's a, a safety issue, a potential safety issue there. Again, I refer back to the other, we, we recommend that, well, they wear pads, we recommend that they wear helmets. And you saw all the people last fall that were do, being good trail riders and they had all of their gear on. See that? They all had helmets. So that's good.
I'll get a final bridge picture.
Okay.
Email that tomorrow.
Okay, thank you. Um, let's see, going next, again, just different signage that we have up to, to make sure that people understand the rules. And the, these are at, at more obscure places, right? Not just at the Trailhead. We have, we have rules and and wayfinding signs and other rules, other signs that we have for people throughout the mountain biking park so that there's not an issue with, with, I didn't know this, or I didn't know that, or whatever, you know, right? They're, they're, they all know when they're going on to or off of Santaquin City property and where the park starts and that kind of thing. Our, we're also doing a trails map, and I need to pull that up. I don't have that on this one, but, um, again, we're gonna be connecting trails. I I would imagine, if we can get DNR to, to finish up with their permitting process, we could have twenty miles of trails by the end of this fall. I, I wanna say we have about ten right now, ten to twelve, but there's a pretty good effort that needs to go through. They've, they've given us verbal approval from the DNR, but we don't have the paperwork yet, and so we're just holding off. Right, right now, you can actually ride about, oh, three miles on one trail on the, on the east side of, from the parking lot up. If you go down the other way, you can go as much as six miles, two miles up, two miles back, and then as much as about six or seven miles. You can actually make it all the way across the bridge to the Allen Pond now, from Santaquin Canyon. That's following the, the, the little bit of area on the Forest Service that we were looking at, that we, that has been completed. And then also along the Joel Kester easement along there.
That, that trail was made by hand.
That's what I was saying, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So when you, you say a map of the trails, is, are you, are you gonna make it so that somebody could pull it up on their?
We, we will, yes. We're not to that point yet, but we're getting close.
Okay, but that's, that's the plan though, right?
It's a QR code or an app that they'll just be able to carry with them.
I will, yeah. Let me, let me get through this and I'll pull up the map. And one of the things that we've tried to do on the map is we've, we've tried to designate what are Santaquin City trails. We've tried to designate where somebody, they go off into the Forest Service property, because even up at the top along where the, the old pipeline is, we, we, for the Forest Service has given us permission and a permit to put a bike bridge over the fence. So they can follow the trestle ro- road now and get up on the Holy's bench, and there's hundreds of miles of two-track ATV and and four-wheel drive and fire service roads up there. But we, we try to help them understand when they're leaving and when they're coming on to Santaquin City properties. Cause those are the ones that we have, those are the ones that we have the purview over, right? Once they get off into somebody else's property, there, there's plenty of trails up there, and we're not advocating for, for that other than they can still use stuff on the, on the Forest Service property, federal property. Um, we're gonna continue to connect trails. Um, we're, we're, we continue to have trail maintenance volunteers. In fact, like you say, the mayor's gonna have somebody up there this, tomorrow. And then I think this Saturday, there's also a large event where they're gonna go up and continue to clean and, and rake and, and cut trees and other things to to just make the, the trails as usable as possible. Uh, naming the trails and maps, we, we'll see that on the map. Uh, picnic benches, uh, designated parking area or park areas, so there's different areas in there where we'll have. We already have some picnic tables, but we've got some newer ones that are be, that'll be put up there here in the, in the short little bit. Uh, we are gonna plan on having a grand opening on Saturday, September thirtieth at eight AM. You're all invited. We'll, we'll have, uh, probably donuts and hot chocolate and lots of mountain biking. Um, what we would recommend going forward is that we look for another state, uh, recreation grant to help us with either trails or more park benches or whatever the, whatever the case may be. So that'll be something that John and, and the mayor and I will work together and and put in a grant. Those grant funds are, are fantastic and really help us to, to leverage those funds with volunteers especially. Um, so now we can go, a- again, I think today you can go all the way from Prospector View Park Trailhead to the Allen Pond, using Pole Canyon Road.
Yeah.
Which is a fire service road. It's not the designated route through the DNR property, but it does, I mean, people hike it and ride it. ATVs, trucks, bikes all the time. Um, developing the Bike Skills Park, and I'll show you kind of where that will be, what, what that's being considered. Uh, we may wanna look at a lower parking area in Santaquin Canyon, kind of where we cross the, the, the creek bed when it's dry. The, the challenge to that is, is that the county, uh, has not given us approval for that at this point in time. So they may or may not do that right now. They've just given us the permit for the, the main parking lot that's there. But the, the parking lot down below could be a mile below that, mile and a half below the other one.
Yeah, it is. But, but, uh, with, with the county redoing the flood basin, that's gonna give us materials and ways that we may be able to just work with them, because they're gonna wanna close off some of the area. Let's get to utilize a new park too.
Yeah, so that would be again down farther, and it would be a much smaller, no restroom there. It might be five cars, ten cars, something like that. Cause not a lot of area there. Um, but that's something that we could look at. Um, we are going to be implementing, uh, an international, the international trail marking system for level of difficulty for trails. If, if any of you know about skiing, they have a, a green circle and a, and a blue square and black diamonds and double black diamonds. I'm not sure we have any double black diamonds, but we probably have some black diamonds. And we have some other ones that are, that are intermediate and beginner trails, outside of the Bike Skills Park. So those will be, John and I are working on that and we'll, we'll, uh, kind of figure where all of those at, ride the trails, walk them and make sure that we can have those implemented so that there, people know what kind of ability that they have and where they're going to. There is a little bit of a challenge with that, and that is that there are some areas where you might have to go through a blue square to get to a round circle, a green round circle. So, but again, we'll mark that and, and make it so that it is very clear to people what their ability is and what they're, what they should be able to count on and be able to do. What they should be able to count on and be able to do. Just so that people have the idea that you don't have to go climb like this. There's other areas that can go. You know, the pipeline trail down in the canyon. Is a is a perfect example of that. Very, very shallow, very meandering, very calm and mellow and. Basically, you could cross the bridge just below the the mountain bike park, go all the way down to the near the mouth of the canyon. And go back up and and it would be a perfect ride for a very much a beginner. There's just not a lot there that's gonna have any issues with with that. Yes, ma'am.
Um, will all of the trails, even after they are marked and assigned a level of difficulty? Will they um will they all be both biking and hiking?
Yes, the intent there, I believe, is is that we've, in fact, if you look at the mar- the markings that we have. Let me go back up to the signs and you'll be able to see that that the only things that are prohibited at this point in time are motorized vehicles and horses.
Oh, I didn't know that same one was gonna be on every.
It it will be. They'll be all named and they'll be all with this type of a of a deal on there so that it. Somebody can't say, oh, I didn't know I wasn't supposed to ride my motorcycle on it. Right at the trailhead and it will be at right at the beginning and and maybe at other points along the trails where two trails come together, something like that. So yeah. It that that's the intent is that that it would be mountain biking and hiking. Again, not horses. Horses are a different, um, you know, set of of circumstances and a different etiquette and a different. Trail maintenance and other things that go along with that and and the same with with uh with motorcycles. And again, motorcycles in this context are, if you have an electric bike that has a throttle, that's a motorcycle. It's not an electric bike. So just pedal assist on the on the mountain bikes is all that is allowed there. So it's not really motorized. It's just pedal assist. Um, and then from here, as we as we move forward, we're gonna start getting more and more trails. We've talked about it a little bit last year at the budget retreat. Again, this year, we're gonna talk about a bu- at the budget retreat. We're 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 gonna need somebody to be able to. Kind of spearhead this and make sure that they're taking care of maintenance and and all of those types of things. We may be able to fund a part-time position. Next year, as we go through the budgeting process, we'll just have to look at it and and see where we go. Um, I did wanna, let me let me just break from this for just one second and.
Can I make a couple of comments on this?
Cuz you can probably tell him better than I can.
And there's a couple of things that I want to make sure get done through you, John, and maybe you'll have to get with Jason Callaway too, but uh. We need to put some of these maps into the kiosk. They need to be there. And and just so you know, Norm's referred three or four times to that we getting names onto things. Everything is named. Everything has a name, even the ones that aren't done. And and one that you see on that map, uh, the um brownstone. Is within a few hours of finishing and and we've got it right where that hand is, right where he had his hand is.
It'll be connecting to Little May.
Within a few hundred feet. It's already wrapped around from the Little May coming down, so. Um, everything has a name and everything is identifiable. We just need to get those signs out too. Picnic tables, you're gonna have a a schedule next week to get those on. I'd love to have them out. Pretty soon.
Identified on the map too?
Yes, yeah, yes. They're actually, John and I sat down and we positioned where we want all these things put and. I I think what we'll do is just make a list of, hey, if you wanna go hike to a place where you can have a really neat. Place to sit down or to have a lunch, we'll have a table there or a bench there for you.
And which was the one that you said Norm would be like a leisurely? Beginner, go across the bridge, turn around and go back?
Yeah, can I can I zoom into the to the parking lot and then as I zoom out, I'll be able to identify things a little bit better, okay? So here's the parking lot with the restroom and and most of you hasn't been able to see kind of the the switchback trails on both. Faces of the of the hill right here that takes you all up. That's the Silver King and the Bacon. This this is Forest Service boundary right here. So this bacon trail comes down along a Forest Service and fence and then comes in and then. Stays on our property, but that that is the most visible, those are the most visible trails that you can see today. The Skills Bike Park would be would be has been planned and and they're currently designing it right here above the bathrooms. And that can have everything from jumps to berms to to um different types of abilities so that it it will just be. Um, ju- just a really good, I don't wanna call it an obstacle course, but there's a lot of different options there. There's a lot of different. Features, I guess, is the best way to put it, John. And then if we zoom out, then.
Just to make sure that I have my orientation correct because. I have been to the parking lot multiple times and then you and I took that field trip. And so the the parking lot is on the north side of the road.
It's actually on the east side of the road, but the the this map is north.
Well, yeah, based on where the road goes.
The northeast side of the road, yes.
But if the um, but the so Santaquin, going to Santaquin would be at the top of the.
Yeah, this is the Santaquin Canyon Road right here. This is the road. That goes out of the canyon, that's correct.
But where you're taking that hand, that's down the canyon.
That is down canyon, that is correct.
Instead of and and going toward the bottom of this map is up the canyon.
That is correct.
Just so anybody watching because that unregular map would be the opposite.
So this is the bridge right here. This this little green spot right here is where we cross the creek. Um, the all of these trails again to get down here, the purple, the this purple in here, at least for a distance. And all of the red, so the red Turkey Run is the one that I was saying you could get probably. Three to four miles on a very leisurely, th- this is where you and I have hiked, Betsy. So you and I hiked from the bottom. The the top of the page down to the springs.
And then we got on the trail and went back up.
That's correct. That is correct, yep. Right, right there is where you and I hiked on that field trip that we took right there. Again, the bridge crosses here. Um, as we get to, remember I talked about Forest Service boundary? Once we get over the bike bridge right here, this is all Forest Service. This is all um. Uh again, two-track or single-track roads. You can you can see them in here. You can see people have been riding and hiking and doing ATV. All all over up there for year for decades, probably longer than decades. But that's one of the distinctions that we're doing is that we're we're making sure that we know what are our trails and what are. Forest Service trails now and and also.
Those are single-track.
They they are single-track, but these are Forest Service trails on Forest Service property, not maintained by the city. Okay, and this one going down here, after we leave the 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 forty acres that we have, there's an area in here. That is Forest Service City Trails on Forest Service Property, city maintained, because this is where we have the permit for. We do have a permit to cross the the with the bike bridge right here across the fence, but once you get on the other side of the fence, that's all Forest Service. We're not maintaining it. We're not doing anything with it. That's all just, we we were given permission to give them connectivity to existing trails on the Forest Service property. That is that a good way to explain it, Mayor?
Yeah, it to ensure that it stays in the park, though, we can agree to uh. Do maintenance with the club and. It'll take care of it for.
Sure, over over time, that's the intent is to is to to get all of that connectivity done and and again, right here. If you if you were follow this line, so this is, what's the purple one? I don't remember.
Little May.
So so Little May, as you can tell, gets a little bit steeper. So you might have a you might have a a green circle to here. And then from here, it would go into a blue square, me um an intermediate, a medium, medium duty um. Use. And then from here, it goes up to the ridge right here. This this will be the trail that connects to our south forty.
That that very left bottom corner has another bike fence bridge on it.
Right, right here.
Already there.
Right there, and then this is the trail that will, this this Little May, this is the trail, correct me if I'm wrong, Mayor, that will go all the way along the Kester property. And come up and eventually go down into Pole Canyon, right? Right about right here?
Right in there. That's actually the the name changes right there where it gets onto Kester's and um. All of the things have names for a reason. They're either mines, if they belong with us, or animals or insects if they belong to the state. Forest Forest Services find with us naming uh things with uh mines on them. And then uh, we did, we did, we're able to dig up a piece of the old original pipe. The wooden pipe and it is now in the museum. And uh, there's a bunch of pieces to go with it so people can look at what each of the pieces are like. You know, we've we've been able to pull some pretty cool things out of all of this. And you may look at that and go, well, how does this? How does this uh trail system map? Well, it's really easy. I got with the with the engineering. We put the GIS thing as an app on my phone. And I put it in my pocket and I turn it on and ride or hike. And it maps them within a couple of feet. So these are very accurately placed trails.
So if I may, this is a this is a more zoom, a a more spread out map that helps us to kind of understand where we're headed and where we're going again. We've talked about this this red trail right here. This is Martha's future, but it's pretty much already ready to go across the Joel Kester Easman. Again, this is the the Forest Service connectivity. This is our forty acres down here. You can see the white square lines. Those are our forty acres. This is our eighty acres. This is the li- the the Turkey Run down here. And if you don't know why it's called Turkey Run. Take a drive up there in the morning sometime. It is full of turkeys.
I understand they taste awful.
They do, that's my understanding as well, so.
You must have a different palate than most.
They taste like a turkey.
Forest Service property over here as we get down into into Pole Canyon. Again, the dash lines, I'm gonna zoom in just a little bit right here cuz I think it'll be a little easier. The dash lines are future, although this red dash line is now nearly complete. Right now, they can ride on the road going down Pole Canyon Road. That's how they get to the Allen Pond right there. This is our Theodore Allen Pond Park. Where we just put in the pavilion. If you haven't seen the pavilion, it's beautiful.
It is beautiful.
It is awesome. There's water there. There's picnic benches there. They can go have a picnic and do some disc golf and fish. All at the same time.
And I think as the weather cools, the playground will be used more and it's really nice.
Yep, the green trail is is what that has been mapped out tentatively with the DNR. Because it goes across mostly their property and comes down and will also get us back into the the west side of the Allen Pond. At some point in the future. This is the South Interchange for reference right here and the radio towers are right about right here.
That's also Bonneville Shoreline.
Yeah, this this bluish line right here is roughly the Bonneville Shoreline Trail Line. There's a there's some roads and power line corridors that go up through there that that we'll be able to use as we go about doing what we're doing here, so. Um, and then of course, long term, if you remember up over here off the screen to the to the northeast of here, or just the north of here. Is Great Cliffs. And you recall that we're gonna be getting a hundred and fifty acres donated up there, natural open space. That that eventually the plan is to connect these trails here with the trails over in in Great Cliffs and the roads and the two-track and single-tracks over there. So e- eventually, you know, who who knows years down the road, w- we could have over a hundred miles of trail likely. That that people could go to our Theodore Allen Pond or the the Prospector View Trailhead Park, parking lot and and. Ride for a whole day. They do it right now in Pace and Canyon. If you go up Pace and Canyon there to go off the mountain uh Mount Lofer Hiking Trail. They'll they'll mountain bike all the way down the the ravine there, all the way to the mouth of the canyon, so. Similar similar to that, but this is it's kind of the. Did I miss anything here? I got the maps. The one thing we didn't get was a finished picture of the bridge, and I have one on my phone, but. We'll get it to you.
We do need to get the signs up soon and.
He he's working on that, some of them, yeah.
There's there's one other thing I really would like to do and and I moved ahead because I wanted to see what kind of costs they would be. But I wanted to bring it up as a point of interest today, and that is. In the next few months, I would really like to start a campaign to sell Santaquin. And to do so, we need to have a way to do that. And if we could get some really neat videos. Those videos can play on our website, on our our Facebook sites and a whole bunch of other places, but we need to get quality ones.
So to be clear, Mayor, you're talking about promoting Santaquin, not selling Santaquin.
I wanna sell Santaquin to people that will come here and and enjoy it, but. First bid that I got was about forty thousand dollars, but or thirty thousand dollars and it included uh. Hiring talent for six thousand dollars for people to ride bikes and, you know. Uh, four thousand dollars in the right kind of editor. This, I think, would be a heck of an in- investment, but I don't think we have the money. If you guys thought we did, I'd like to know where we're gonna get it and follow up with it, but. I think we have some really talented people that we may be able to include in in the next month. We're gonna have the most spectacular colors and especially as as we get ready in the end of the month to. Uh dedicate this park, it's gonna be in full bloom. And most of that. South side of the road, the west side of the canyon is maple. Uh, more so than than uh oak. And yet on the east side, the the south side is mostly oak. And so there's quite a contrast between the two. And and if you guys would go for a walk and into the new areas where I've been digging trails up in. What's called the Brownstone and along the Little May. The the oak trees and the maple trees are sometimes this big around. And they are going to be spectacular this year. So the colors, if we can get drones to fly and make some videos. We could do some incredible things, but we have to either hire somebody like this. Or we need to uh find some people that are willing to put something together for us cuz. I'm not a video guy and I don't even do real good with my phone, so. I had a nice four-point in the backyard the other morning and took a picture of him and he was only standing thirty yards away. And it's black. You can't see a thing.
So Mayor, we could have a special video contest. If you wanna do something like that, I know we have a lot of talented people. You 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 could, maybe we could put out a a.
We used to have a video contest.
We have the picture contest, but I'm not seeing anything with the video.
No, we used to ha- we used to have a video contest and we had. Um, residents and high school students who entered and they were awesome.
Yeah, we we could put, it it we probably want it to be specific to the to the time of year and the colors and the mountain bike trails, but. That's something that we could certainly look at prob- possibly doing.
Now, remember, I wanted to say I I wanna sell Santaquin. Okay, I wanna promote. We've got a, we've got a new building we're gonna dedicate. We've got a brand-new park out there that. When they pay play pickleball, there there's hundreds of people out there. Why do we not have videos of all of this that we can combine onto sellable, marketable? Goods that will promote Santaquin in a lot of ways, you know? Uh, we should be taking a few shots of our. New industrial park that we've been putting together for a year. We should be taking shots of what's happening around town and maybe even include. Something like Great Cliffs that says, hey, do you know what this is? Would surely be a selling point or at least a storyboard for a lot of people. I'd. Maybe we need to do a video thing. Maybe we need to do it again, but it needs to be. As as much as I would like to focus on the the bike park, my life is this bike park, it seems like right now and. I'm wearing out a good machine doing it, but uh. It's it's been a lot of fun and yet there is a whole lot of story to this city and uh. This is the perfect time to do it. We're gonna have colors with with that park and we're gonna be able to grab some video, but we gotta do it. We either. Need to think about how we could do it or hire somebody to do it or find a way to promote some videos. And I'm not sure how we can pull this off.
I'll look into it, Mayor, and see if there's something we can come up with and and uh bring back the video contest.
Alright, well.
May I just say something? I feel so much better. I feel so much better. I have lost sleep over this.
Me too.
I'm sure you have. But I have lost sleep over it because I did not feel like I was taken along on the journey. I supported the project and then this is my perspective. I'm not gonna speak for anybody else, but I felt like after I supported it, I was left behind.
Norm felt the same way.
Norm felt the same way.
That's my. That's something that, that you have helped me to know that I can do better, and I will do better, that's, that's something that I should have been doing a, a long, all along, but it's just, it's one of those things that just, we were just kind of a- and I need to do better, so I apologize for that.
But, but one thing to that is I reported monthly on what was going on, how things were being dug, and what kinda work, and how many hours were going in. And I have spent better than a thousand hours up there, and I have yet to run into a single councilman on those, on the, those trails, so. You know, I would have been glad to take, taking you there, but it's been a, a journey that a year and a half ago, a year and nine months ago, I said, I wanna do this, and you guys said you would support me. And your support has been from your chairs, and I'm glad you did that. But I'll tell you what, it's not been an easy journey in any way, and I have held up my promise that I was gonna make a park that wasn't gonna cost us a fortune, and it hasn't. But it's been at the expense of a lot of time and a lot of dang hard work. So, I apologize for leaving you behind, but I didn't have time to wait.
Well, I'm not, I'm not saying that as a criticism, I'm afraid maybe that came across as a criticism, it's not intended as a criticism as much as it is feedback of, we're all supposed to be on the same team, that doesn't mean that we're always going to agree. That doesn't mean that we're always going to, um, even like each other, and that's okay. Because that's the, that's the real world, but we can be civil and we can be kind and we can be respectful. And we can choose to forgive when others make a mistake or slight us in some way, and it's not intended as a criticism, it's intended as we each have things that are priorities to us, right? And, and this has been a priority of yours, Mayor Olson, and I applaud you for that because it, it has been a huge project for you to spearhead and undertake, and um, and it's going to become a great thing for our city. In saying that, I felt like I was left behind on the journey. I, this answered a, a lot of the questions that I had. And we're over time, so I will ask the others to John later, but but this, this brought forth a lot of information that had been on my mind and that had been a concern to me about safety and about, um, levels of ability being clearly marked, so that everyone knows that they can go and use it if they want to, it's, it's not only black diamond level, right? It's for everybody and that they will be safe when they go up there, and that has been a huge concern on my mind. Um, and I think that's why I got emotional because safety is, is a big priority to me. And so, um, not all of us are retired, not all of us, um, are empty nesters. And we each have different priorities and, um, and that's okay, that's okay. Um, and, and so to try to encourage and support one another when we can and how we can is very important in a team effort to improve our community as a whole, and try to help everybody feel included. So, I mean, I, I, I can only speak for myself, I work a lot of hours during the week, I still have a child at home. And, um, and I spend a lot of time with the youth council too. So we're each helping in the way that we are able to and that we choose to make ourselves available. And, and that's okay, it's not a criticism, it's, let's learn how we can improve moving forward, and this, this addresses a lot of my concerns and questions, so I really appreciate that.
Hey, thank you for your feedback, hopefully I'll, I'll do better in the future.
Before we close down, I know we're over, John, I want you to do a quick report on Orchard Days, isn't that what we were gonna do?
I can do as much as I can quickly.
Before he does it, can I ask one question?
Sure.
Are we planning on uh, doing anything with the parking lot at Allen Pond? Chip it, can we, can we not chip it like we did that, that up there?
So, I could probably answer that, um, I've talked with Jason Callaway and we're, we're planning to do that.
Oh, okay.
With some leftover, um.
Millings, huh?
Millings, and, and I think he's gonna kinda square around some of the rocks and kinda clean it up a little bit to, to add to the, that, so we can get more cars in there.
Perfect.
So that's something that, again, I, timeline for a lot of uh, public works, parks and community services, I think first and foremost is getting into City Hall next week, super excited about that, and then of course, getting ready for Prospector View and, and working toward that. Um, quick updates on Orchard Days, so we met as staff and, um, we have a logistics committee that meets after, after Orchard Days with police, fire, emergency preparedness, community services, parks and public works, and Councilmember Hathaway, um, joined us for that meeting, it was really good, we, I'll just name five really positive things and then five things that we, we wanna work on, and if we don't have time to address all of them today, we could even discuss it later. Um, one thing we really wanted to work on was our parking for the rodeo, both rodeo nights and slack. And our, um, roping clubs really helped us with that, and we've improved every year to get more and more vehicles in there. Uh, we moved our s- our family night activities to Centennial Park, so instead of being all spread out, it was all on, uh, uh, one park. And it was just fabulous, we had so many positive comments about it being the place to be, and, and there was activities for youth and teens and adults, and we still had the concert going on, and we did a movie in the park and and hometown market and everything, so that went really well. We made an effort relating to safety, um, with the kids parade, we always worry about taking them behind all those cars that are parked around the block. And so we made a, a concerted effort to move them over between the school and the wrecked building and, and do that little, um, that little parade, and it went without a hitch, um, it wasn't a full block, but everyone got to see their grandkids and their kids decorate their bikes and do that, and that turned out really positive. Um, we as staff did not really have a lot of, um, complaints about changing up the online version. I should say not providing printed versions everywhere as far as the activity guide goes for Orchard Days. Um, I think I had one person that actually mentioned to me that they would prefer that it, it came back. So we, you know, we saved over ten thousand dollars and was able to do something and still get the word out. All of our events were very well attended, in fact, our ancillary events, all, um, we moved a lot of them, would be, it rained every single day of the week. But we were able to still find ways to do that, working with, um, community services staff and working with parks and adjusting things, and in fact, our home run derby, we did it out in the soccer fields, cause we, we didn't have a place because it had rained so much. Um, and just the fact that the rodeo actually happened was a miracle, I remember Jason Callaway talking to me Friday morning saying, I don't know if the arena's gonna be ready, and they went out and they worked really hard with the roping club and and added some dirt and just worked the arena because it had rained so much every night, and we had wonderful rodeos, so. Again, so many positive things, um, last, last really positive thing to just mention was the transition with the car show. We've had, uh, Waylon Pruitt doing such a great job over the years, um, as a volunteer, and we've transitioned that to another group that has just done a fabulous job, and I apologize. Um, the name of the volunteer that led that has just left my mind, I'll, I'll get back.
Mitchell.
Thank you, um, with the local insurance company, and just, they did fabulous, picked right up where we left off and had a wonderful car show, so those were the really good things, I'll just highlight a couple things that we talked about needing um, work on next year, and again, a lot of those are logistic things that we're already looking at, one is, um, the new parade route uh, next year because of construction on Main Street, moving the parade route to One Hundred South, there's gonna be a lot of discussion. In fact, the logistics committee will meet again in a couple weeks and already start working on, what would that look like? Can that be done safely and, and get that many people? Um, the parade itself, we had over eighty entries, so I, I, I know, um, Councilmember Montoya mentioned I think one of the last meetings that there had been some concern, is it getting too long, do we need to shorten that? Um, if we do, how do you determine who gets in, who doesn't, so that's probably a discussion for another time, but consider that, as the parade continues to grow in popularity. Um, we've talked about, um, helping protect our, our volunteers that run, you know, Mark Robbins and his crew that run the fireworks, we need to do everything we can to close off Fifth West. So internally, we're, we're figuring out how to make sure that we don't have anyone, even our royalty going on Fifth West to the arena. And, and just making sure that we, we can cover that. Um, and then the last thing is just something that we'll talk about another day is just, um, you know, for safety is do we allow throwing of candy from vehicles during the parade or not, that's a debate across the state and something that we, we probably need to have a discussion with, with this group in a future meeting, so.
I thought that the state law changed that candy cannot be thrown from the vehicle if you wanna throw candy, someone has to be walking on the street.
I don't know if it's a state law, um, it's something that we advertised in, in, in the parade.
I think that the law changed after the little girl in Nefi was killed.
Okay, I will look into that before we meet again.
Confirming that would like.
That would really, that would definitely help us out. Okay, any other thoughts on Orchard Days, I know our time is short?
Thanks, John.
Okay, that was just a quick snapshot.
Appreciate all of it. And thanks for all the help with the bike park too. Um, we're not gonna have time to hit the other couple of items, um.
We can bring those back at another time if you.
Yeah, we can, the, that was one of the things we wanted to discuss anyway, we can do it next time. So I'd entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, you got ten minutes.